Let's get the June 6, 2022 zoning board of adjustments going. It is 1:30. And I'm calling to order and we need to establish that a quorum is present, which there is. Need to recognize a new member, Julie Epperson. Hello, Julie.
Have to push that to talk.
You're good, as long as it's green.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, have a good time. Enjoy. That's amazing, your first case, staff is turning down both of them. So we're gonna get a good one today. I feel it in my bones. We're gonna have a nice audience out there. Hope everyone's in a good mood and it's a good place to be in 102-degree weather. All right, let's see, we need to review and take any action related to the minutes of the last regular meeting held Monday on February 7. Wow. I haven't seen y'all since then. My goodness gracious.
Remember, we were here in April.
Oh, in April, yeah, okay.
Yeah, February's, we're ready.
Thank you.
We forgot those minutes.
Keep me in line. Do we have any questions on the minutes? I don't.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, we need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept as written.
Both of them?
Yep, both February 7th and April 4th.
Okay, that's a motion on the table, need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Pass is 6-0. All right, item number... Oh, 3. I was reading ways. Okay, item number 3, ZBA 22-04. No, there I go again. No, no, no. Quit reading the minutes. Item number 3, ZBA 22-07, 1940 St. Anne Street. A request to allow 60% recreational vehicle use in an MHP, mobile home park zoned area in lieu of the maximum 30% set by city council.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Board. Kyle Warren, playing in development. And as Chair Cortez just said, this is ZBA 2207, 1940 St. Anne Street. And they requested a variance for 60% RV use in a mobile home park zoning rather than the maximum 30. It's in District 4, Lucy Gonzalez, and the Fort Concho East neighborhood. And here's the map of it to the left here. And the area highlighted in red is the property. And here's the one image I was able to take of it. It's just basically straightaway road into a mobile home park and it deadends at the end, so that is the subject property. And our notification map just consisted of four notifications, because most of it was city property surrounding this one. Zero in opposition, zero in favor back. And special circumstance, the variance requested proves no hardship on the property due to unusual topography, right-of-way encroachments, or any other reason that suggests that normal rules should not apply in this case. Not results the applicant. There are no special circumstances associated with this property. The applicant only wants the ability to allow more of their property for RV use contrary to the ordinance limitations specifically adopted by the city council. An unnecessary hardship, we see no unnecessary hardship or undue hardship as all MHP zoning is held to the same standard of 30% RV use. And the minimum action needed, if the variance were granted, the use of land would be contrary to public interest as city council approved the maximum 30% rule for RV use in the zoning ordinance, it's Chapter 12, Exhibit A, Article 4, Section 416, Item F2. That's a mouthful. This was done to limit transient occupancy in mobile home parks and temporary oil field camps. And I did talk to our director about this one, and he said they were pretty stringent on that 30% rule, so. No adverse impacts, granting this variance may not affect adjacent land adversely, but some of the permanent residents in the mobile homes may find the allowance and more RV use against the character of the mobile home park, consistent with zoning ordinance. Section 104.2 of the zoning ordinance states that the purpose of the ordinance is to protect the character of the established pattern and development in each area. And we believe that granting this variance will disrupt the pattern of development in this area as MHP zoning's primary use is for mobile homes. And our recommendation is for the zoning board of adjustment to deny variance from 416-F of the zoning ordinance to allow for 60% recreational vehicle use in a mobile home park zoned area in lieu of the maximum 30% set by council. And I will say, after saying all that, I did talk to the applicant on the phone, I think they're out of Fort Worth. And that 60% is kind of an arbitrary number, I think they were talking like six or seven spots that they wanted to put RVs in in lieu of mobile homes. But I never did receive a site plan from them to show what spots would be affected, so I don't know the certain percentage. And from my understanding, they wanted to be here to talk. I don't know if they're in the audience. Yes, sir. So he is here to make a case. But other than that, that is our recommendation. Are there any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any mobile home park under the control of the city, I guess I assume inside the city limits, where the 30% allowance has, or a higher percentage has been granted to any other mobile park in the city limits of San Angelo?
Not that I'm aware of. And...
Neither.
Okay, none?
Like I said, our director was pretty strict on this one, because he said, it was basically, you know, their fear of man camps, if you will, showing up and more transient population. That said, though, the applicant has argued that usually it costs more to have an RV than it does a mobile home, so, you know, you might get a better client at your park, but that was kind of his argument for that variance, if you will. But not that I know of, no, I don't know of any other mobile home parks that exceed that.
Is there, I have another question. Is there a given length? You know, because if you take a mobile home, you take a travel trailer, per se, I mean, they're constructed basically sort of the same, except one's a lot shorter. Is there any length restrictions where you say, well, if you're gonna have a mobile home, does it, or travel, you know, trailer, mobile home, where, you know, how you want to classify that? Is there a certain length or something that would say, you know what, if it's not of this length, then it's classified as a mobile home for its depth? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
No, it'd just be the mobile home would be a more permanent fix.
It's more of a permanent structure.
And the RV, I mean, it's basically just...
Yeah.
Because, you know, you can have an RV that's bigger than a mobile home, but it's still a transient thing.
Yeah, the way they make these travel trailers now, they almost look like mobile homes.
Yeah. But it's just, can you pull it out the next day versus is it gonna take a...
Oh, yeah, you gotta go through.
...flatbed truck to come in and prop it up?
Right, and all that stuff, got you. Okay, all right, thank you.
Kyle, can you go back to the satellite view?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That city owns the property around it?
That's correct. And they did also state that, you know, they really can't expand due to that, but we wouldn't take that as a variance because it's not, you know, a hardship per se, it's just you've got your land, here's what you can do with it. And that's that.
If he doesn't present a site plan, we'll need to use this, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Where would they put it, the back end there?
I don't know. I don't know where they would put it if they were granted the variance.
Right now, the way it sits, is there, can you put it anywhere in there? I mean, you could go mobile home, mobile home, RV, right? The 30%...
Correct, as long as it's 30% or less, they can do that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and did anybody, are the people who live in the mobile homes, were they allowed to respond to this at all, or was it only the surrounding landowners around them?
Um, it was just surrounding landowners. On that one, that was kind of a tough call, because I know the applicant, the landowner, is here in favor of it, so since it's not certain parcels that are dibbied up, it's just one big slice, it's him making the, we're for this variance, not 20 people against it, because, you know, I, because it would ultimately go to his address if we mailed it out anyway.
That's true.
But that, yeah, that was kind of a tough predicament, but, I mean, he's obviously for it, like I said, he's here to make a case, so.
What's, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
What's the city ordinance guidelines to allow for, like, I always refer, I remember this was a big controversy back when the oil really went crazy and people were trying to throw up these, you know, that's an improper word, were trying to, you know, put in all these man camps or these, you know, whatever. And the city had some really strict guidelines. Did y'all not regard to that one, Mr. Fisher? Didn't?
I remember that. The basic premise is that for new mobile home parks, you need a minimum of 10 acres. The setbacks are, would be normally 20 feet from an outer perimeter property line and then 10 feet in between the structures, just for good practice and, you know, for building and planning setbacks. But other than that, that's it. This one was, looks like it was already done before that.
Right.
And so the 30% rule was implemented in the new ordinance anyway. So that's still, that's been there since the beginning.
Yeah, so if somebody wanted to put in a facility that would allow for RV campers, what are those rules or regulations regarding, it has to be, what, minimum 10 acres? And, I mean, are they even allowed in the city?
Well, it would be in mobile home park, but they'd just only be 30%. Any RV, there's no RV zoning.
Isn't there a difference for recreational vehicles and mobile home parks, is that correct? Campgrounds and RV parks, isn't that a separate section than, than...
Because I remember it was, I mean, it was a huge, huge deal, because everybody, all these investors, everybody's trying to put these, these things together.
Correct.
And it was met by a lot of opposition and a lot of restrictions.
Saying that it needed at least the 10 acres and that is for a campground RV park.
Yeah, this was back in, when they started back...
Probably 2014, 2015, somewhere in there.
14, 15 is when that was the year that comes to mind.
The main difference is if it's in our, if it's zoned for, allowed for an RV park only, which is not the case here, then you can have 100% of the units. In the case where you're in a mobile home park, then only 30% applies.
30% restriction.
Because the intent was it's gonna be for mobile homes, but they also understood, like Kyle was saying, within reason, there'd be some RVs that would also park in a mobile home park as well. So the councils thought 30% was reasonable, because they knew if it was those other types of structures, they would jam it in at 100%.
Right, yeah, let me stay, yeah, I'll stay.
So what is 30% of what we're working on right now? So how many, how many, if we counted those numbers, spots?
Well, and like I said, that's hard to say, because I never saw a site plan, and it may not even be a 30% at this point.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, yeah.
I just...
Without the site plan, then we would not know the number of spaces already there that's taken.
Correct.
In relationship to the ones that are vacant, because then that would establish the amount of allowed...
And like I said, the 60% is kind of arbitrary, I mean, it's, from what they told me, they, like, six or seven more RV spots they'd like. And I, again, I don't know what that is as a percentage on the whole. I just said, you know, let's just go to 60, but it's, it is kind of hard to make a decision without the site plan showing that.
Yeah, without the site plan, it's hard, it's hard to calibrate.
Yeah.
Well, how many acres are we dealing with right now? Do we know?
Uh, I didn't have the acreage on this one, I'm sorry about that. Let me see if it says it on here.
There's probably at least 30 or 35.
Does it say it in the report? I'm sorry about that, I should have put it up on here.
Yeah, it's 4.75 acres.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's for that whole red lot, that red outline there, 4.75 acres, but again, it really isn't the acreage, just the spots, you know, how many are mobile home, how many are RV, and that's the percentage, not the land area per se.
Is there a particular, is there a particular amount of spacing between each mobile, each individual lot that there's supposed to be compliance with?
Jeff, would you know that, is that a parking issue per se?
Between units?
Yeah, between, is there so much area that was, yeah, there has to be...
Yeah, usually 10 feet.
A minimum of 10 feet between each unit and allowed area there. Okay, all right.
So do you multiply the 30% off the acreage or the square footage, the total square feet?
It's the number of lots that are allowed in there, number of slips, if you will, number of parking slips, if you will.
So you're using the acreage number times a formula, times where the square...
We kind of let them give us their site plan, so if they wanted to have more, more space between them, they could do that, or if they wanted to say, all right, we're just doing the 10 feet between them and have a little more density, then that might get them to squeeze a few in. And that's where that's kind of up to the applicant, if they...
The code says, whoa, placement of no more than 10 spaces per acre.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
10 spaces per RV or just overall?
So we have 4.75?
That's what the code says.
Okay.
So they could have 47 spaces, is that what we're interpreting?
That's right, yep.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm counting almost, if I'm, I was trying to count all those little colored spots. There's over 30 or 35 there right now.
And like I said, I didn't know if they were at this 30% number or not yet, neither did they. They might be able to do what they want to do with the five or six RVs still and be legal in the compliance.
Now, this park has been there quite a while, so the new rules that come in, if it's the same owner, do they have vested rights for going with the old rules?
I wouldn't think so.
I would say since this is a request to expand their number, then they have to come by whatever the new rules are. It looks like, and if my calculations are wrong, please tell me, Captain Cortez.
My pen doesn't work.
I came up with 14 spots, that they would be eligible at the 30%.
Yep, that's what I, that's what I calculated.
And so it might, might be to hear from the applicant to see if that is a number that they can work with, or how many more they're looking for past the 14.
If all those, if all those white spots are filled with mobile homes already, I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot of leftover land to put in 14.
I would just say that satellite images change and things move in and out. They just do, so.
Well, that, and I also don't know how many of those are RVs.
If you follow the rules, though, I mean, we don't, we don't need a variance, do we? If it qualifies.
Correct, if he falls within the 30%, correct, that is correct.
There you go. And again, I think...
Any more questions for Kyle?
Other than, I think a site plan would be really important.
Was that a question?
Well, I, again, I'd ask them for one.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'd ask them for a site plan, and to the best of my knowledge, I never received one.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
I want to make sure I understand. At this point, we don't know if there's one RV out there or if there's 20. Is that a correct statement?
Correct. That's why the applicant's here, and I explained this over the phone with them, like, it's gonna be hard to, you know, get an idea of what this certain percentage is when we present in the issue we're having right now, and...
And nobody drove out there to go count them before the meeting today?
No, I didn't drive into the mobile home park, because that, I believe, would be private property to take pictures and...
Okay.
Well, the spaces would be designated as RV only, right?
I don't know, considering, like you were saying earlier, this is an older mobile home park, and they may have had, you know, RVs existing without any kind of demarcation just because, you know, it was before 2014 or 2015 when those, when all that was passed.
So we can't make a decision today, correct? I just want to make sure I'm following all of this.
I would say it depends on what the applicant has to bring.
Okay.
Okay.
That's everybody has to say.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle, appreciate everything.
All right, public comment. State your name, please, sir.
Hi, my name is William Chad Countess, I go by Chad.
Can you spell, can you spell that last name for me?
Countess C-O-U-N-T-E-S-S.
Okay.
I don't know if I brought enough handouts for everyone, if we leave that up there, that'd be good. I got six handouts, is there, is everyone here a voting member?
Yes, starting there. Mr. Tillis.
He's not in the room, I'm just coming down to give you guys a brief history.
Yeah, we can do that.
I was getting ready to retire from the military in 2013, and I was looking, of course, the oil field was booming then, so I was looking for an RV park, mobile home park within the city limits on city water and city sewer. In 2013, I found a dilapidated RV mobile home park over on the city property with an absentee owner that had just ignored the property, and it was just about vacant. I think there were 12 raggedy mobile homes on there and four raggedy RVs on there. I purchased the property with the intent that this park would be grandfathered, I think it was built in the 50s, but the last thing the city has is a 1972 special permit on it for a mobile home park, which was before the rules of what a mobile home and manufactured park and the 30% rules applied. You could have what we call a trailer park, a special permit for a trailer park, and it didn't dictate how many RVs or mobile homes you could have. And that was the goal of me buying this older park, was to be grandfathered into the new rules. Well, I bought the park in 2013, I received this letter on your first handout there, if you'll just read the bold point, it says there were no zoning violations on the property. I did this before I bought it, I had a lawyer on my team that made me do this from the city. No zoning violations currently, I had mobile homes and RVs on there. 2014, the witch hunt for man camps from the city council came, and there was a lot of pressure in the city. And then I was notified after I bought the park that I was no longer within zoning, I didn't have the proper zoning on my park, after the park was bought, after I received this letter. Under much stress, working with the city attorney and the zoning commission, I had threatened to take away my zoning altogether, because they said I was issued a license in 1972 that was probably invalid, and that I could probably not, I don't have any proper zoning on the land. In 2014, I then went to the city council, who were the ones really pushing the man camp issue and to stop it. They felt bad for me, because their intent was not to punish existing owners of RV and mobile home parks at the time. And then they told the city and the city planners to work with me to get this worked out, because it wasn't fair to what they had done to me, especially after writing that If you flip through that on the back, you could probably see the original plat, probably done in the 50s or 60s, that show 43 slots is what the park is currently zoned at. I talked to Al Torres over at the city, and the way they track that is the electrical meters. So what's funny to me is I have 43 slots with 30 amp electrical meters, which a home or a manufacturer home cannot run on a 30 amp breaker, but an RV can. But somebody had put in 43 30 amp breakers, but I was not allowed to turn those on, because I was at my limit of my 30%, well, later on, my 30% RV rule. I don't know why anyone would put in 30 amp breakers, if sometime in the past I didn't have those turned on for RVs. And the, the issue ended up being, you get the city attorney involved, in 1972, there were special permits you could get, uh, applied. So this was a question and answer period to the city back in 2013, of what they were having a problem with the park and the zoning ordinance. But if you go to page, I marked it on there, the current code, 1972 code, on page D of that second packet, talks about special use permits down at the bottom. It starts, at the very bottom, starts with A, B, C, and D, hotels. B is tourist camps, trailer parks. So in 1972, you could apply for a special use permit for a trailer park. This type of trailer park did not have any restrictions on 30% RV rule or mobile home versus trailer, they just called it a trailer park. An application for a special zoning permit for a trailer park was applied, for some reason, when it got approved in the minutes, it was approved as a mobile home park special use permit. There was no definition of a mobile home park special use permit in 1972, there was only a trailer park special use permit. Well, in 1976 and onward, they started to define the word mobile home park and manufactured park, and they applied it retroactively to my park in 1972, since mine was, my permit, special use permit, was labeled a mobile home park, which I think it was applied, the only way it could have been applied for would have been a special use permit for a trailer park, and I don't know how it got labeled mobile home park, because there was no way to apply for a mobile home park special use permit in 1972. But the city attorneys said, well, we have no intent of what the 1972 board was deciding, so the mobile home park rule now applies to your park, and if you want to have RVs in there, we'll welcome you into the new zoning laws. So I was so afraid they were gonna take my zoning away, I just did what they said, and I haven't had the courage to show up here again until eight years later. And so what I'm asking for is, we have 13 RVs in there now, it's not as full as you think, we have 43 slots, we have about 28 of them filled. Nobody moves in mobile homes anymore, I mean, eventually you'll have to update that, no, everyone buys large RVs now. And you can put skirting on RVs too, but to move in a mobile home is at least $3,000, and it's $3,000 to move one out, after you take the skirting, the hauling fee, hooking up the electrical and the plumbing. Most of my clientele can't afford that fee, and most of them own their homes, but when they leave, no one's gonna buy a mobile home. Only trailers that have been put in there, two that I put in there. And it's, it's very expensive compared to having an RV. I never understood the city's predicament of, why do you want to have a huge influx, influx of oilfield people, when they do come in, have to build permitting or put in mobile homes that get vacated when they can take their RV and leave the city? I don't know why we don't want, we want these RVs outside the city limits. I'm not talking about a man camp, I'm talking about an RV park. It just, it just didn't make sense. I think I was kind of hoodwinked into accepting the new code as a threat for them taking away my zoning law. Originally, I should have had was the 1972 special use permit, which would have had no restrictions on my RVs and mobile homes. I'm just now having the courage now to stand up for that. But my request is to go, number wise, is to 18 RVs. I get no calls from mobile homes, and my phone rings off the hook for RVs. We've had a lot of nurses here for COVID that worked at the hospital that stayed in my park for RVs. The city has no overflow for lower-income housing, or monthly housing workers are here for construction. The rent's gone through the roof, and I know mobile home parks, RV parks are unsightly to see, but they do the service for low-income housing for the city. HUD housing, mobile homes are approved for Section 8 housing, no one's moving any Section 8 housing in, I'll tell you that. But that is my case, I just think I was treated unfairly when I bought the park, and I'm trying to remedy that situation, because it's really, it hurts our profitability. Thank you.
We're here to help you if we can, stay there, we're gonna have some questions.
Do what?
We're gonna have some questions for you, I'm sure.
So is the, let me start.
Yep, go ahead.
Is the thought that you're getting, you're getting rid of some of the mobile homes in favor of changing them to RV slots, is that what we're talking about?
No, now, I have demolished two old RVs people moved out of that were just trash, it cost me about three grand a piece to dispose of the mobile homes, because you can't just wheel a mobile home off. But most of the electrical meters in the park are 30 amp electrical meters, which I'm now allowed to activate, because the city license office knows I'm at my max RVs, and they won't let me power on any more of those amperage boxes. Now, I can apply for a 100 or 200 amp amperage box to put in a mobile home, but the existing circuit breaker panels that are in there are 30 amp.
And I have a question, so all these mobile homes that are there, they operate on a 30 amp?
No, they've had their own throughout time, either 100 amp or 200 amp panel put in.
Right, I was saying, I don't see how they could operate without higher, but now, I don't, I own a travel trailer, mine's a 50 amp, so I'm just curious.
I think we do have some 50 amp, but mainly 30, but I'm just looking for permission to turn five of them more back on. I don't want to say I'm a special case compared to the rest of the parks in the city, but I think that... But I think the city kind of owes me one here, just for at least maybe a five-year term where I can have five more RVs so I can recoup some of my money. But I just don't think what was done to me was correct, especially after you read that first letter, and then they threatened to close my park down.
Well, by our calculations, 14 spaces could be RV.
Yeah, there was that 47.
He says he has got 43 spots, which at 30% would be 13, based on his layout that he did, well, was that layout for 2013?
It was for 43. And that's what, I guess, Al Torres, I don't know where he works, but that's the number he uses to calculate how many RVs.
Is this, I don't see any recording information on there. Where'd you find this?
I don't know. I found it in the city record file or, you know, I don't know how they applied for stuff back in the 72s or the 50s.
Was that from the special permit?
Probably, yeah. When they did the special permit.
Do you have a copy of the special permit? Were you able to?
Um, the city was. I did not bring it with me. Because they looked up the meetings from that meeting, and there were no, there were no minutes. And handout too, I think he talks about that, that the minutes they looked up, there was nothing in there that talked about why it was called a mobile home park and not a travel park.
Aaron, would this be like a preliminary plat then?
Well, I think his site plan there that puts the 43 lots is a valid site plan unless it's, unless he chooses to change it. And then at that point, you know, if he, it's hard to determine, and I don't, I haven't looked at it real extensively yet of what the distance is between those. But as we said, it was 4.75 acres. And so we, I mean, looking up there at the top right, looks like the Arroyo comes through there, and that may be why he doesn't have a full 47 lots or spaces in there.
Well, I'd like to know.
There is some land that's not shown. To the right center, you see a kind of triangle going out around the red box to the right of the triangle. There's a little triangle that's sort of about a half acre to an acre.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's part of that Arroyo. It's on the backside of that Arroyo.
I think he's talking about a little further down, yeah.
More up front, like this is the front of the park in San Antonio. If you were to go into the park and take a hard right, you'll see a triangle forming there behind the railroad trailers. That's all basically. That's another.
Now, what is this zoning on it? The agenda said it's. MHP?
Yeah, that triangle was kind of.
It's hard to.
And, oh, is that 40?
Is, do you own that right there?
Yeah.
And that constitutes the 40, the 4.75 acres? Hmm. Well, it doesn't. What is the zoning, Aaron? MHP or commercial?
MHP.
General, commercial, heavy commercial?
It's MHP.
MHP. Was that through the, how'd it get to MHP?
I'm guessing in 2000, when the city did a rezoning for the city, that's probably when it got.
In 2014, when I had the scuffle with the city, and I went, I had to finally go to the city council, and the city council directed the city to make amends with me and figure this out. So the mobile home park zoning was done in 2014, 15. Because they were afraid my special use permit may be invalid.
That's a lot of background that I'd need to look over before I can give y'all. Yeah. I mean, we need to look at the council action, the special permit.
Yeah, I got tons of more emails and stuff like AJ, the city attorney at the time. I didn't bring it all with me. But the end result was I agreed to go under the new mobile home park laws because they were sure my special use permit from 1972 was valid.
I mean, if you're, if you're saying that the special permit was revoked, is that what you're?
They were afraid it could be revoked.
Okay.
This was 2014. I mean, I'm just telling you, RV parks and mobile homes were shunned upon.
Right. But you think the council action that happened at that time in 2014 overrode your special permit or you gave it up or?
Well, no, the city council finally heard my story, what I'm telling you today, and directed the city to work this out with me any way they could. And the way we worked it out was they recommended that I go ahead and go under the new zoning regs. It's more modern. And you won't have the risk of losing your special use permit from 1972, which wouldn't have allowed me any limitations on RVs or mobile homes.
I don't think they wanted to make a decision. They brought, told you to bring it to the board and we'll make the decision. I think it's so much old stuff in there that the time has taken care of it, and here we are today. And it looks to me like you have enough for 14 spaces, and you said you wanted 16?
Oh, five more, 18 would be the max. I mean, that's the difference.
Now, how many, now how many, excuse me, how many mobile homes are in there now?
Of the 43 slots, about 15.
15? So are the slots for the RVs the same size as the mobile homes?
Yeah. And it really spaces the park out better. I don't know if you've been to some of the mobile homes.
So if we leave you 15, if we leave you 15 mobile home spaces, you'll be okay with that? And 18, that would be, or designate, if we can designate, I guess what I'm getting to here, if we can designate 18 RV spaces for you, and the rest of it would be mobile home?
That'd be great.
I don't have a problem with that.
And I just want to say, as the staff member that's been in contact with him, I didn't know a lot of this background information either. And with all this, the fact that it's such an old park, I do think that's kind of a fair.
Is there across the street from the school district maintenance?
The city maintenance yard across the street.
Ballparks over there. I could see people playing ball coming over there and parking.
Oh, yeah. We've had people from the softball park want to rent from us, RVs from the weekends, but we can't do it.
So where did the 60% recreational vehicle use come from? Was that just arbitrary?
Yeah, it was just like, we'll go with that. They, we initially, some background on, we initially accepted it. I was going for approval, and then the director said, no, the city council was very hard on that. So then we kind of had to wiggle around, say, well, what might be approvable by ZBA? And I think he came down to six or seven more spots. That's what I mentioned in the presentation.
We went out and looked. We can only put, we only want to put five more RV slots in just because we're trying to keep it spaced out in there. We don't want the home, the mobile homes right next to each other. The nice thing about RVs is it's usually a single family or a couple living. When you get a mobile home in with a three bedroom, and there's six or eight people in there, causes issues. The clientele from the RVs, I mean, you just get a better, I'm here to help the people of Section 8 that need family housing too. I mean, I've got to know those people. There's kids growing up in that park. And I know that everyone doesn't like them, but there's a need for low income housing in this town, whether you want them or not. And where we are, I don't think we're really bothering anyone but the city of San Angelo. The city's actually bothering us. On the left-hand side, they've turned that into some type of industrial park where they've grounded up all the asphalt and clay on that lot to the left of me. And there's no, there's no fence in between us. All that stuff blows over into our mobile home park.
So Gary, if we say, okay, we're going to 18, then in our reasoning behind it would be that's his request. If another mobile home park comes in here and says, well, I want 50 out of 75, should we go with a percentage instead of a number? And so if other people do it, there's, you know what I mean?
Good question. So 18 out of a potential of up to 47 spaces would be 38.2. So that would be 38% is what you're approving. And this is assuming they max out at 47 in the future. We don't know how many are out there now.
Yeah, if the 60% rule applies, what we're talking about is nowhere near the 60%.
So we made it 40%?
Forty, yeah, 42% then, of 43, 18 divided by 43.
We have kind of a standard, just a number.
I just need, like, the utility people, they have me at 43, so they base my number on 43 slots.
And this, this action will, depending on what the ZBA commission does vote on, then that does go to our building permits. So they have that. What one item I would recommend, if you are looking at making a recommendation or a motion other than the denial of having a condition of that we get an updated site plan. Now, the question pops into my mind is, does he need to designate which ones are RVs? Or does he have it open to where it's just 18 spaces within the total number? But just something to ponder.
Well, I mean, the 100 amp and 200 amp breaker boxes for mobile homes. The 30 amp, I have plenty of 30 amps to choose from. I just, it's just kind of like, what grounds the most level? Which is the way for more people?
But an updated site plan might help maybe in the future.
The question that, I'm sorry, the question that comes to mind too also, he said that he has 30 amp breaker boxes for, but, I mean, I'm a, I'm an RV owner, and mine's a 50, and I have to have 50 whenever I plug in. Otherwise, I have two air conditioners, and something ain't going to work. It's going to blow circuits.
Well, I believe, once we, if there's an action that's taken today, we would get that information to the building official so that if the gentleman or even one of the lot owner or lot renters needed to come and upgrade their service, they would be allowed to do that because the percentage has been increased if that's an action that's taken today.
They'd just get a bigger.
Yeah, they would just do a service change out.
Just do a service change, which is pretty minimal cost, just to put in a, you know, you got the panel there to work with it.
Yes.
So if you have 4.75 acres, and by applying that, the rule that y'all were, said it's in code, so you're, so you would be allowed 47.5 slots, slips, right? Is that right, Aaron?
Based on the acreage, yes.
The acreage, but a site plan is going to be able to dictate, because that'll show exactly how many slips that it has. So that would be, then that would drive the number of units.
Yes, sir. And if y'all have a, as Commissioner Hamby said, well, do we do a raw number? Or do we do a percentage of those total?
Got you. Yes.
It was my understanding from the code in the past, it was based off the number of slots you have. Like, my park only has 43 slots. That other quarter or half acres undeveloped, those don't count. They have to be developed slots. So I only have 43 developed slots. So it's 30% of the 43, even though I could, that's landlocked. Someone could build some more slots over there, but it's based off platted and built slots.
Oh, I got you.
So I'm at 43.
Appreciate the honesty, but it's TMI on your side there.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. I could be wrong.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're just running off the 40, 4.75. They get 47 and a half, so kind of get your numbers up there a little higher.
Yeah. I don't have any problem. I know that area well. It's been rundown forever. It sounds like he's trying to build it back up. And there's nothing around it except city stuff.
So we did 45%?
That's what we're making.
Yeah. I was just.
The percentage, yeah.
There's just nothing there. That's unique.
I think we can make a motion to.
Yeah.
Can we make a motion to change to 60% to 45%?
I was just going to go straight up slots. And leave the percentage out there based on this case.
I think, I think step one should be that we should ask for a updated site plan.
Yes.
Step two would be we determine how many sites are identified on that updated site plan. Step three would be 40%, 37% of that number is allocated, it can be allocated for RV.
Well, he's going to go, well, that makes sense, but it's going to go to additional expense, not knowing whether he's going to get the zoning or not.
Well, I mean, the site plan is still what it was originally. It was 43 slots and that. It's exactly what it looks like today.
So Aaron, what was the site plan you were requesting then? What updated site plan?
Well, if you go with the percentage or a certain number of slots, do you want those slots designated or if a?
So a site plan that would designate RV versus home?
Versus mobile home.
Wouldn't he do that while he's getting his permits and stuff? Would he give them?
And I would say that's just a condition that we would add, that when he comes in, we would work through that with him.
That wouldn't be anything we'd have to.
Right. Nothing that he'd have to come back to the board for.
Yeah. Well, I don't see him having to spend any money and not knowing that he's going to get.
Correct.
I have one question that comes to mind. If we today were to grant this, then by increasing that from 30% to X amount of percentage, that's going to be then kind of opening of a Pandora's box to all other mobile home parks here in San Angelo that say, well, now I can have.
Well, yeah, but so each variance you're going to hear, I mean, it's on a case-by-case basis. So you're going to consider all the variance factors for each case you get. I mean,
I got you.
To some extent, it creates precedent, I guess, but, I mean.
But it's not going to be that much big of an impact based upon this particular property, the area around it?
And given the circumstances of the age and everything.
And why he said, you know, because originally it sounded like he had, he had, he had the, he had the special permit that says he can put how many mobile, travel RV that he wants, kind of.
Yeah, but that's the thing. I don't know what happened to that special permit. I mean, without going back and looking at the council action, all that, I can't really tell you. But if you're wanting to take the action today, then, yeah, it would just be affecting this case.
We're going to take action today.
Okay.
I think that's our purpose. That's why people come to the zoning board.
You said 18 slots, Mr. Campus?
Yes.
And you think that'd be sufficient?
I'm not going to push my luck.
All right. Well, I'm willing to give you 20 myself.
That'd be $1,500 an extra month.
So he don't have to come back?
Yeah, but that's that back corner where there's nothing there. I don't think.
But we have been, we have been clearing out the park, tearing down the old trailers, put up a fence in front. And just build up my, keep that thing from falling apart.
You want to move on spending money, you need income, you need revenue coming in in the mobile home business, not bringing enough RV business. They're out there. You drive out the highways. They're everywhere.
RVs, I get five, I get five phone calls a day for RVs.
And I know this area well. It's been that way. If they had satellite, if they had Google in the 50s, it would look just like that, except without the school stuff.
Gary, before we, I'm just throwing this out there. Instead of a certain number of slots, if you do percentage and he acquires additional land, his percentage goes up. If you do it by number of slots and he acquires additional land, he has to come back. Does that make sense? You know what I mean? So if we keep it as a percentage, then if he acquires additional land, his number of RVs increases.
Well, that would be half. If I went to, if I twisted to 20, that would basically be 50%.
Or a number, percentage, whichever's greater.
So is 45% sound like a good number then? They'll be halfway in between the 30 and the 60?
We're going off of 43, right?
Yes.
What was your number, Jeff?
I had, I had 42% if they do 18 out of.
That's 18 slots at 42%?
Correct.
That's out of 47 slots.
Out of, no, 18 divided by 43, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, 40, 42% of 43.
If we say slots, doesn't that cap somebody else coming in and saying, well, you did this for this? Well, we got 18. You're wanting 30 or whatever. I don't know.
I don't know. I know we could do, I was just.
Now, I'm with you.
Individual cases.
Yep, individual. I like 45%.
45?
Yes, please.
What does that give her?
19.
19.
Point two, so you could go to 29.
Who's going to know the difference?
Was there a motion somewhere in there?
Do I need to make a motion to change the synopsis from 60% to 40%?
And if you were to develop that other, up to 47.5 of the, of the, then you'll have X potentially that much more.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of locked in there by the trailers, so.
I've tried for 20. It's 19. It's.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy.
We haven't had to vote yet. Now, don't start celebrating.
Just, just build a big pad. That's what you need. Just build you a big pad.
So do we have a correct motion?
No.
Mr. Chairman, we, let me check. Make sure there's no other public comment also.
Oh, yeah.
This is from.
Oh, okay, a public comment. I'm sorry.
Just so we can read this into the record correctly. So it's 45% of the allowable spaces in the park, correct? Not 45% of what's there now potentially, which might be less than 45% of the potential amount?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
That way he could get a little bit more.
Yeah, in case if he wants to develop more, then he'll have the ability to expand that without having to come back to us or nobody else. Does that sound?
I hope he does. I hope he wants to expand. That means he's been successful.
Okay.
Any other public comment? There being none? Let's see, the board's already made comments, we need to make a motion. Call for a motion, hold on a second, let me see, we, we, board has already commented, right? We had all our comments?
Yes. Diedrick needs to be quiet over there.
I just wanna say, I get it.
Tell us you're being.
Sure.
Let's put it into form, let's, let's get a motion, go, want somebody to make a motion?
Can I just change the synopsis, or do I need to read the whole thing?
Uh, we're gonna have to read the whole thing into the record.
Okay, well, first of all, I believe that we deny what the city has presented to us. Do we have to do that first?
No, you, you can approve based on what y'all would want instead.
Then, the motion I make is the applicant has submitted a request for approval of a variance from four-one-six F of the zoning ordinance to allow for forty-five percent recreational vehicle use in an MHP mobile home park zone area in lieu of the maximum thirty percent set by city council.
Okay, good. With an updated site plan, and, uh, do we want?
With an updated site plan and?
Designate the site plans for RVs or mobile homes?
And, yes, all of that, please.
No one there?
No.
That's up to him.
For him to decide where they go, like, that's true too.
I don't think that's something we wanna do.
Yep. We just wanna give them the forty-five percent.
Just an updated site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes it simple, yeah.
Does that sound good?
Yep, I like it.
Law office?
I'll second that.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, before we do a second, does that all sound, we miss anything? All right.
I think that's good.
I need a second?
I'll second that motion.
A second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? No ayes, pass is six-zero. Good luck, sir.
Good luck, sir.
Or seven-zero.
It is seven, seven percent.
Well, I didn't get it past first grade, that's.
Not today.
Not counting, oh, fuck my head. Where am I? Oh, man. Thank you, staff. I can see your anxious, I can feel it. Yeah, let's go back to nineteen fifty-four records and see what's there. Who has time for that, right?
Yeah, it's true.
All right, uh, here we go. Item number four. ZBA twenty-two dash zero-eight, sixteen thirteen Canal Road, a request for appeal of a denial by the planning director of administrative adjustment from section two-oh-three-point B-point four of zoning ordinance to allow for an all-weather surface driveway in lieu of a paved driveway in order to construct a carport within the single-family residential RS-one zoning district located at sixteen thirteen Canal Road. And I guess Mr. Jeff's gonna be bringing us up to date on this.
Thank you, Chair Cortez, members of ZBA, this is our second case today. Sixteen thirteen Canal Road, ZBA twenty-two oh-eight, uh, it's point-two-seven acres, and it's southeast of Nicker Bacher Road and Shady Point Circle in Tommy Hebert District One in the Nazworthy neighborhood. So the applicant came in for a, um, building permit for a three-car, or I should say, a wide enough for, for three vehicles, uh, for a, a covered structure. And later it was determined that only the middle of those, um, of that structure was going to be used for, um, for parking, where that white car there is with the parking spot. Um, and the, as part of that, the zoning ordinance requires a paved driveway to come from where the parking spot is to the street. Uh, so it's twenty-seven feet to the property line, and then there's another ten feet of right-of-way that has to, they have to obtain an approach permit from permits to get that. So all of that has to be either asphalt, uh, concrete, or another approved surface, it cannot be caliche or dirt, which, which is what it is right now, and so that's what we're looking at. The first part of the carport, and I keep calling it a carport, so let's call this area of the structure on the right and the structure on the left, or north and south, um, these, these areas do not have to be paved, um, even though they're currently showing a vehicle there, um, they've indicated that's not gonna be used for vehicle parking. So your question today is whether or not to support a caliche driveway instead of a paved driveway. Uh, this is down at the lake, and so in the past, a lot of these lots were, before annexation, had caliche driveways, and then over time, um, under the new rules, people started putting them in. So we estimated about, um, half of the driveways were, were paved or had some sort of paving. Um, I got about forty-five percent that had, um, paving, and then the other fifty-five percent didn't. So again, it's, it's fairly close. Uh, here's an example of a home that didn't have a, a paved driveway, as you can see, or a paved parking area, and this is sort of the new standard here, just again, random example of one that went through the process. Uh, and they've also, from roughly, here's their property line, so this is the, this would be the approach area on the city right-of-way that also needs to be included in that. So they've, they've basically met, the one on the right has met today's rules. Um, they came in and, and applied for an administrative adjustment, so this is actually not a variance today, this is a decision, um, to consider overturning the director's decision to deny the administrative variance, called an administrative adjustment or not. So the criteria is a little bit less strict than if it was a full variance, um, but again, you're still, have voting power to decide whether you think that it, that administrative variance decision to deny it was correct, or whether you feel that, um, you do want to approve the variance and let them stay with the caliche drive. Uh, in Lake Nazworthy, there's a provision in the ordinance for these sorts of recreational areas, that if you're on narrower streets without curb and gutters, um, and a substantial amount of properties in that area don't have paved driveways, the planning director can approve administrative, um, variance. And so I think in some parts of Lake Nazworthy, we did some research on this, um, let me actually go back to the aerial, so you can see this, I don't have all of them, but as you zoom out on Shady Point Circle, the lots get longer. So there were four variances that were granted, uh, over the years, two of them by y'all and two of them by previous planning directors, I'd say between nineteen ninety-six and two thousand and seven, to allow the caliche or limestone, crushed limestone surfaces and not pavement. But these were the ones that were adjacent to the lake, so those driveways were over, uh, or those lot sizes were three hundred and fifty to five hundred feet long, this property's only about half that, a hundred and fifty feet. So the concern is if supporting the caliche driveways, you get a lot of washover and storms and, and, uh, when it rains, and all that caliche kind of piles up and may blow over, or if it's dusty, may blow over onto the neighbor's properties. And so those are the kind of things you're looking at, is this appropriate? Uh, each case, like Kyle's case too, each case is different, so you all determine from what I've given you, um, if this is appropriate. Of the fifty-six properties, we looked at with the shorter lots, sort of the internal ones in this area, no variances were ever given. So out of those, I said about fifty-five percent of the properties were unpaved, those were likely grandfathered, legal non-conforming before annexation. Um, if not, uh, we would have turned them down at the counter and said that they needed to other, again, get an administrative variance, or a full variance, come here, or, or, or pave it. So it looks like this is, this would be the first one, if you did approve it, that would grant them not having to pave the driveway, um, based on the shorter lot sizes. Okay, so I ran through the pictures, um, here's a, a site plan that was provided, and I just drew on top so you guys could see it clearly. So it's twenty-seven feet of caliche, and then another ten feet to the road, so their responsibility, if this was denied today, would be to pave about nine, minimums nine feet wide, so they'd have to do at least nine feet wide and thirty-seven feet long to the edge of the street to connect to the pavement. Um, or the variance would be granted. And again, they have paved their parking spot underneath that blue area where the carport is, it's just everything in front of that that's not. So for administrative adjustments, um, there's basically the four criteria, and I've already, think I've already talked about the rationale, um, but this, the four criteria is that it maintains the same land use compatibility as what you see around it. It will not materially and adversely affect adjacent land uses, will not adversely affect value of nearby property in any way, and will generally be consistent with the ordinance. Um, at least one, two, and four, we don't believe have been met. Um, it's hard to determine property values, um, as, as planners and, and planning staff without an economic background, but obviously if that caliche continues to wash away and more and more people are not paving the driveways, that could affect number three. But it's just, we just don't believe it's compatible with the, um, with the surrounding area, given the shorter lot sizes. Um, if they were, again, on Shady Point Circle and they had a three-hundred-foot-long driveway, that would be a special circumstance for a variance, but we don't believe that that's the case here. Again, um, they've been very good to work with, the Beaches, um, Ms. Beach is here for any questions, but, um, unfortunately, again, based on our research, we, we just don't support the, the variance, given the surrounding area. So that concludes, um, my presentation, if anyone had any comments?
Administrative variance.
Correct, yes.
And y'all are having to go by the book, the updated code.
That's right, so that, that.
And throwing it all back into us. Wish y'all make the tough decisions, and we can just go on.
The, the difference here is you don't have to prove a special circumstance or hardship, so, but you do have to show that at least it's, it's compatible with the area, so it's a little less strict than if it was a full variance?
Yep.
Jeff, could you go to their site plan, and I just want one clarification, that ten feet to the road, that's in the right-of-way, is that correct?
That's right.
And so therefore, that has to be paved, no matter what? They, they don't have the ability to choose or make a decision on the right-of-way?
Aaron's correct, yes, that would have to go through building permits, and they would have to do that. So really, Aaron's correct, it's just the twenty-seven feet you're, you're voting on today, that's right.
So, uh, how, how much driveway are we doing? Thirty-seven total feet?
Twenty-seven.
So twenty-seven feet.
Plus ten.
Plus ten.
The ten's required, no matter what.
Yeah. Okay.
Technically, I know it's minor, they only have to widen it to nine, but I mean, again, it's, ten is better, 'cause it's ten feet under the carport.
And, and it says it has a minimum of nine foot wide?
Yes, for a parking spot, that's right.
But this is driveway?
Yes, uh, even for a driveway, I believe, with minimum standards, so that it would match the, because for residential permits, there's the potential that they could park in front of the carport, and so a parking spot in San Angelo is nine feet wide, so it should be at least nine feet wide.
The ribbon drives aren't allowed anymore?
Say that again?
The ribbon drives aren't allowed anymore?
Um, I'm sorry, can you define that?
The little ribbon strips that anybody's put in, when, before they happen?
That's, that's not how we've done it, I mean, you could consider that.
I don't know, curious, myself.
Yeah.
That, that would take an interpretation by the director of planning, uh, if a ribbon drive is allowable. I know that we have considered some alternatives in the past, uh, currently in our ordinance, there are not alternatives, it says paved driveway intending it to be at least nine, nine feet wide, because it could be a parking space, which is a minimum of nine feet wide. And this one needing two parking spaces, they'd have one under the carport and one directly behind.
So we're basically looking, the, the problem, how was this caught? What brought it up?
Um, there was a notice of violation that was given, the carport was built without a permit, so they came in for a permit. Um, I wanted to note one more thing as well, the side of the carport, towards the south, it's not clear there, but it's only approximately two feet from the south lot line, so if you do, if you did approve this today, we would have to put a condition that that is shifted over three feet, and we did communicate that to the applicant.
Run that by me one more time.
Yes, so the south side property line needs to also be five feet, so the carport was built without a permit and is only approximately two feet from that lot line.
You might go to the elevation view, Jeff, it might be a little clearer.
Okay. Yes, you could see on that side there, it's very close to the neighbor's, um, property line, so they would either have to cut, um, where are we at right now? Two feet off of this piece, or push everything over by two feet, so that's another hiccup that's, they're not applying for that variance today, they've agreed to do that if they were to get approved, but they would have to make that adjustment.
Where's the sideline on this one? Or you just?
It's hard to tell, um, I would say it's approximately where the end, to the left of that truck, um, but again, that's, that's, it's hard for, for us to, to tell, and it's on, that picture unfortunately is taken on an angle.
Where the truck is, I don't see a roof, but where's the carport? Oh, the beam?
Yeah, I see where the brown, that beam is.
Oh, okay.
It actually sticks out further, that, you, what, this is the house roof line?
Yeah.
My bad, so it's actually out to about here.
Is there metal over that?
Not yet.
Okay.
Nope.
That's pretty standard, we're gonna rest it on some posts. So, what's that, no, right? Okay, all right, that's a different, uh, that's a different thing than what we're gonna look at today.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
We're dealing with driveway.
So the problem is pervious versus impervious?
Yes. Correct, yes. And so with, these are difficult cases, because again, in, in, towards the lake, there has been a lot of variances given over the years, but most of them have been on those larger lots, usually the ones that back out onto the water are the larger ones that were approved, so it just makes more sense, and then again, the, if the caliche, you know, washes down the hill, it's not gonna impact the neighbor. I think in this case, we just, it is, on one hand, it's recreational, but it's not recreational enough that staff was confident in supporting the administrative adjustment.
So it could be asphalt?
Could be asphalt, could be concrete, it could be brick pavers, or another surface as determined by the city engineer that would basically meet the intent of that, so no caliche, no limestone, no crushed base.
Concrete, concrete's mighty expensive, so is labor.
Sure.
So this would not follow under some kind of economic hardship at this particular time, with ten percent inflation going on, and everything going up, and all that kind of thing?
And unfortunately, y'all can't consider economic hardship as a criteria for a variance or an adjustment, um, the way the ordinance was written.
Okay, so we got caught on a code violation?
Yeah, I, I believe it was a, an inspector that went out from building permits, so it was a permits violation.
And there's more out there like this?
Yes. Yeah, out of the fifty-six lots, I'd say, it's.
So they, they, did they, did they, uh, issue a violation on the other ones? Are we gonna be, run this, run at us, or is this just gonna be this one case right now?
As far, as far as we know, it's this one, we, it would take a lot of research for staff to figure out the other, um, you know, twenty-five lots, if all of those were great, and again, they might have been grandfathered in, a lot of the homes from historical aerials showed that those homes and those driveways were built prior to annexation, so they were before zoning.
Let, let me see if I can clarify just a little bit, um, what was flagged was the structure, the building structure, as a building permit violation, so a code violation for that, not the driveway. The driveway was not flagged as a violation. Had they not be proposing new parking, we wouldn't be discussing the driveway. But they are proposing new, new parking, and therefore the zoning ordinance says it has to be paved. The threshold that we look at is, are, how, how many others in the neighborhood are paved versus unpaved? This one was kind of right in the middle, and so the director was not comfortable making the decision to allow it to be unpaved, let, said, let's go to the ZBA board and allow them to make a, this decision based on their, their knowledge of the area and kind of what happens out there.
So this was grandfathered until they added the carport?
Correct.
So the building code?
Correct.
So they could tear the carport down and be, and be legal? So they could tear the carport down and be legal?
As far as the carport, that's a good question.
Whatever they put up?
Because I think to the right is a porch, and I don't think that would trigger parking. So I... My guess would be they wouldn't be allowed to put a cover on it to call a carport. As far as tear any of the other structure down, I wouldn't think we would require that.
I remember when the impervious material came in and we're not even allowed to park under a shade trees unless it's concrete, right?
That's the way the current ordinance reads, yes.
I didn't like that part.
Jeff, can you go to the, is there a list somewhere in here that shows what we're supposed to be looking at? Those four?
Yes.
I just see it in here. That was once. I miss it somewhere. Just spread out is what it is. An explanation. Gotcha.
All right. Any more questions for Jeff from the board here?
Not for Jeff at this moment.
Ms. Emerson?
No.
Oh.
Ms. Tillis?
I'll just, I'm sorry, I'll just note for the record, before I sit down, there was one opposition to the south at 22, and we did get a phone call this morning, I believe, from number 16 in support, but they had not formally submitted anything by the afternoon when I left, so we'll count it as one opposition for now.
Does 22 have a driveway in pervious?
I believe the owner is here to answer that question. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
All right, we need to ask for the public comment. If anybody wants to come up and talk to us.
My name is Charlene Schmidt, and, oh, my name is Charlene Schmidt, and I co-own the property next to 1613 at 1611 Canal Road. Our driveway is not paved, it's grandfathered. But we've owned that property for, since 2013. Mr. Beach bought his property in 2019, and in September of 2020, Mr. Beach started to build up a pad of gravel-like stuff along, if you look towards 1611, between the two houses there. And it got to the point...
Could y'all pull up a map that references what she's talking about?
Pardon?
We're going to have to send them. I think Jeff's working on pulling up a map that might have an overhead view of the properties.
Okay. Well, if you, if you look right there where that truck is parked, he started to build that up into a thick layer, and it was encroaching on our property, and it became a, a conflict ensued and the police were involved, and so that kind of just went by the wayside. And then in the past month or so, he started to build that steel thing, and he brought the steel post. While I understand y'all to say there's two feet between the post and our property line, I beg to differ, but we had a survey done, and so it's inches, it's not feet. So we right away opposed the idea of having that carport come all the way over and thinking that a driveway would go where that truck is all the way back to where you see a shed on his property. And we opposed that. And so he did modify the plan to say, "Okay, we'll do a driveway from where the car is out to the street." Of course, that would mean them juggling vehicles if they use the driveway to park. But we do still oppose the variance on the basis that historically, there's been little regard for what the rules are. And I know that this is not practical according to the list of criteria, but give an inch, take a mile. So we do still oppose the driveway variance. We do, we are interested in seeing what happens with the steel posts there. Are they just going to stay there? Are they going to be cut down? Or are they going to be, have wind chimes hung on them? I don't know, because he's got a big boat and a four-wheeler and all kinds of things that he has to find a place to put. So anyway, we do oppose, and it's your decision and we respect your decision.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
What would, aside just totally opposing, is there any compromise or wrapping around you could do with? Or will we have to talk to him?
I'm not, we oppose.
Okay.
I know that it seems unneighborly, but...
That's okay.
You said, you said he had other, like, I guess, a boat and other recreational... Where are they parked now, currently? Or does he park them on the property?
Pardon?
You said he had boats and something like four-wheelers?
Oh, usually, the boat is parked where the pickup truck is now, right now, anyway. Because sometimes, they move them all around in the front yard there. Now that they've built that big structure, they could never, well, I guess you can lower the thing on the boat. I don't know. I don't have a boat. But they couldn't put the boat under that in its state that it is usually in their yard, and they cover it when it's not in use. But, and they have a motorcycle and a four-wheeler. Usually, the four-wheeler's in the back of the house and the motorcycle's under the carport or the porch. But, again, I, we oppose, I respect your decision.
Any more questions? No questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Schmidt. Ms. Beach, the applicant, did you want to come up and speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did. My name is Victoria Beach. I am Stephen's wife, also owner of the house. I know that she has some concerns about the colici and like the, it going so close to their property line. However, we were told that if we do put up a firewall, that it does not have to be five feet, is that correct?
It doesn't, I believe, for permits, but it would for planning, if that's correct. So you'd still need a zoning setback of five feet.
Okay, okay, that's fine. And he said that he can move that back five feet. So also, we are in the process of putting up like a property divider, which is like a fence, I guess. We were aware that if it's seven feet, we don't need a permit for that. That's what we were told.
Correct.
So, I mean, all that colici going into their driveway, it wouldn't happen anymore. So we just, we're just trying to figure out how to protect our things while keeping our house nice.
Is there a, Jeff, is there a zoning? I know we've had things come up with fences. You can't run a seven-foot fence all the way to the street, can you?
Correct. So the first 25 feet can't be taller than four feet, and then after that, it could go up to seven.
Yes.
But the fence itself could run all the way out to the, not to the extra 10 feet of right-of-way?
Correct. So from the property line, so 10 feet back where the property line starts, that first 25 could go to four, and then further past that could go up to seven.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Is there any stepping, like, did I remember a case, was it last year, regarding properties or fences that obstruct the view out the lake? Is there anything, does this property fall into that category?
I'm not sure, but I think the question, I guess, is probably to focus on the, whether or not to do the, well, I guess you're saying it in the context of the paving. No, there isn't anything specific regarding fence standards at the lake.
Fence, I just want to make her aware that, I know at lake properties, if you put up any fence, it can't be a certain height because if it interferes with the visual view of other residents, is that, is that right, guys? Gary, you remember that case from last year?
No, I don't remember what you're talking about, but I think this doesn't have an application.
I think that's the reason for the, only the four feet in the first 25 feet of that.
Right, the first 25 feet is what it is.
There may be some deed restrictions out around the lake that the city would not deal with, but in this case, it's, Jeff is correct, it would just be the first 25 feet from the right-of-way would be four feet tall, and then it could go up to seven feet back to the back part of the property.
Seven feet for every distance back.
Since this is almost just over 25 feet, it's roughly another two feet out, but it's basically all this area in here can only be four feet. And then as soon as you go past the, the structure, then everything else could be seven all the way around.
Then you jump up to seven?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's for another day, though.
Yeah, for something totally different.
We're dealing with the driveway on, when we have reception at some point, we need, should we take a break?
Well, she had, she has heard the case, but she, I mean, you do have still a quorum, although she had to step away for just a minute, unless...
I mean, you need affirmative vote of six. Y'all have six, so you could, so long as all of y'all agree, you could.
Is that a supermajority?
It's in the code. It requires that for all cases, so.
Is she coming back?
Yes, she is. And I don't know if there's other public comment other than the applicant.
So let me, let me ask you a blunt question.
Okay.
Is the reason you want to stay with the colici due to the expense of concrete or other material?
It is very expensive to do that, yes. Also, we like, we just like colici, concrete, and paving is very expensive right now, so I think there's just a few reasons.
I know that was a hard question, but I'm trying to figure out why the colici.
Well, so before my husband had bought it, there was already a covered porch, and it was falling down, and so they had taken it down. And we were informed that we wouldn't need a permit since it was already like that to begin with. And so it already had the colici, and so that's why it was taken down to begin with. And so we just decided to put it up because we didn't think we needed a permit because we were told that, and so we just liked...
You probably didn't until you went further than the existing one went.
But is it, the colici is just in front, in front of the carport itself, so does it make a difference that we went up this way?
Yes.
Is that this?
Yes.
For the colici, okay, I'm sorry.
Any questions? We have more public comment out there? Thank you. We'll call you back up.
I just have one question.
Ma'am, if you want to come back up, that's okay.
I'm sorry. I know the conversation kind of takes bunny trail sometimes, and did I hear something about a, thank you, a fence in, under consideration in this whole picture, or no?
Well, it sounds like the, the property owners are thinking of putting a fence on the property line, is if I understood the applicant, that they are considering putting a fence over there, potentially a seven-foot fence, maybe a six-foot fence, but that's what they're considering.
Yeah, okay. That's great.
You like that idea?
I like that idea. Thank you very much.
Split the cost, will you? Have a half. There you go. Thanks as well. So what we're dealing with is 27 feet by nine feet wide, is that right? That's all we're here discussing? Thirty-seven, if you count the right-of-way. Oh, yeah, count the right?
Yeah, but they have to pay the right-of-way.
They have to pay. Yeah, that's got to be paved, so. Are they all paved?
Well, there's, there's not a variance process for right-of-way. That's in the engineering services design manual, and so there's not a variance process for that. It's an absolute.
Shereen has hers paved?
Possibly not, because it might have been annexed in, and she has not done any improvements that would trigger that. And again, that's where I said there's improvements that are...
If they have the improvements, they got to do the improvements.
And then there's the potential that, yeah. And that's what's being triggered here. Yes, sir.
Okay. Why you're here, keep me straight.
Maybe.
Maybe. It's a tough job. All right, so we have 37 feet, nine feet wide, minimum?
Yes, but I'd shorten it to 27 just for, just for grins.
Six inches thick, is that driveway? Yeah, depends on the topography. You can form three and a half.
But you can't, according to the four things that we have to look at, the cost is equal. So, I mean, our, I can be, I am sympathetic to it all, but it doesn't mean...
I'm just trying to get a rough number.
Jeff, is there additional public comment?
Yes, we have one more public comment, if that's all right.
I'm sorry?
We have, we have one more public comment, if that's okay, and then we can open it up for a motion.
You're closing the public?
No, we have one more to open, I'm sorry.
One more?
Yes, sir.
One more public comment?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I just have a quick question regarding, so I know you said that was, this was...
State your name, please.
I'm so sorry. I have a quick question. We, my name is London Roberts Scalendo, and we are property owners in the area as well. If this is, is this going to be a particular decision, or is it going to be blanketed to where most of those other owners who do have colici are going to have to put in these 37-foot driveways?
And I think if I understood it correctly, Jeff, if you go to do improvements to the property, then it would trigger it?
Yes, right. So you're, this only applies to their property. Everything's on a case-by-case, so only at the time you would come in for improvements, it could, you, at that point, you might be triggered to do a paved driveway or do what they did and try to apply for a variance.
And the challenging part is, is to know whether it's triggering something on the parking or not. And so some improvements may not trigger additional parking or something to do with parking. This one just happened to do that.
Probably because they put in a carport?
Yes.
Didn't get a permit?
Correct.
And they didn't get a permit?
Correct.
Always get a permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. That way you know. I'm not closing public comment yet, okay? Again, I'd like to ask Ms. Beach more questions.
Okay.
We need, Ms. Beach, could you come up here, please? Again? Do you understand what's happening here? You built the carport without a permit, it triggered all this, now here's your choices, you know, impervious, call it impervious, concrete, they're not going to let, the code's not going to allow colici, limestone and all those other things. We are the ZBA, we can, we can do some stuff here, but again, not getting the permit triggered this. So you have some options. You can take down what you've already, they'll correct me if I'm wrong here, but you take down what you already put up and live like you've been living without having to trigger any concrete, and live on what you've been doing. What, what's triggered this is what you put up without a permit, because they would have, if you wouldn't gotten a permit, they would have told you what you needed to do. That, what, you'd have to put in what they call impervious material, concrete, asphalt, brick pavers, other things like that, and then you'd have probably not have done the addition because of the cost. And I don't know that, that's none of my business, but what would you like to do? Do you want to leave the carport there, move it, move it to the proper side setbacks? You willing to take it down and leave it like it is? Give us some ideas on your thoughts.
Okay.
Because you're going to have to, it's, what it's been told to us, you're going to have to do at least 10 feet in concrete.
From the roadway?
Uh-huh, into the right-of-way. And if you, you know, if you're willing to do that, we'll move on from there as far as trying to work something out on this other deal, but you're going to have to get your, you're still going to have to bring your, you're still going to have to get a permit from authority there and meet all the requirements and things like that. So one option is to take it down, and that, this goes away. Another option is, is if you decide to leave the carport, you're still going to have to do the 10 feet to the street.
And Jeff, could you clarify, because I think you worked through this, but the porch at this time was determined to try to permit separately, and so...
That's right.
If they, if they said, "Okay, we don't want a carport right now," they'll look at it again in the future, they could, as Chairman Cortez is suggesting, not do the carport right now and live as is and continue to finish the porch. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. That's correct.
I do, I was going to say something. I brought a picture of how it actually is right now. So our carport isn't in the middle, like, that's just going to be like the whole porch itself, like, the very end is where we were trying to do that carport. I have a picture if you would like to see it. I didn't make copies, so I'm sorry.
I still don't think that's going to change your question, though.
If you move that, is your parking lot not there anymore either, right?
If she removes her parking, Jeff, if she removes her parking from that, doing what I think she might be suggesting, she'll still need to have two paved parking spaces, right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Because you named it a car, because you named it a carport, then therefore, it catches all these rules, but if it was labeled a porch?
Well, okay, let me correct myself. So if, the trigger for, so the current zoning ordinance requires two paved parking spots, but the trigger for parking is either A, there's a large enough expansion on the house that would trigger the need for the two spaces, or B, there's something new that they're adding. Or B, there's something new that they're adding that is being labeled as parking for cars, which is what the carport was. So if she was to remove that whole structure, she would have no obligations because the, basically the house was grandfathered in that way. And so the two required parking spaces under today's zoning ordinance would not apply. So she wouldn't have to pave any parking if she was to remove that carport or call it something else. Now, of course, that goes back to code compliance. If the neighbor goes out there tomorrow and sees a boat under there or a car under there, then she's in right.
Yeah, it's gonna trigger it back, so either, either you can't, yeah, yeah, got you. So what you really started out, you were doing, and just on your, you replaced a, a, a weathered or dilapidated porch. In doing so, then you decided, well, let's go ahead and build a carport, right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
You were, you were replacing the porch, but then you decided to add a carport?
Yes, we were just putting, we were putting like the shade over it like it used to be. And then he wanted to add that extra, like, so we could park our car over there and just have the rest as the porch.
Yeah.
Just a covered porch. However, we do already have a permit for like the 40-foot. That's what was approved before, which I have them right here.
Yeah, I think, so I think they split the permit into two parts. And so the parts, the porches were already approved because they were separate from the carports. But the carport is, is on hold until this decision today.
And the permit that was approved didn't trigger driveways and curbs?
The first 40?
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at that drawing again. But yeah, if the one, they split it up, as I understand, and the porch was separate from the carport. Because the porch doesn't require any paved parking. It's the carport that triggers the paved parking.
So it's our dilemma. That's our dilemma. You know, we can walk, we can go past the, uh, right-of-way, then in concrete and work the next. Distance to the house if we want to allow impervious, pervious surfaces.
I guess at the end of the day, it's, it's really simple. You're, you're, it's the area in front of the blue to the red property line. That's all we're looking at. So it's 27 feet. Do we, do you want them to pave it? Or do you want to support a, um, a decision not to pave it and override the director's decision?
Twenty-seven feet and the additional 10 feet is, has to be paved.
That's right.
Yeah, 10 feet, so.
So you, the 10 feet to the road, that's, that's all engineering, so they have to do that. They have to concrete that. But from the red property line back to the carport, that yellow area, that's what we're deciding on today.
Yeah, and that's, and that's all we're, and that's all we're discussing here today.
That's it.
That's it, that's the only thing.
So if they make changes, it comes off the table and they have to come back? If they decide to-
If they do something.
Move those around.
That's right.
Then it comes off and they have to recome to the board next time.
If we decide to move what around, I'm sorry?
If, if they decide that, yes, as Gary stated, they want to take out the carport, it comes off the table with us completely.
Yes, if that was saying porch, 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 and there was no carport, this, this would be it.
But you can't park there.
You can't park there, that's right. You can store, put storage, household storage, but you cannot park vehicles.
Would that mean, Jeff, that since their current parking is there, they would not be required to have any parking? If it was all three porches?
Yes, cur, well, let's see. I, I think, I would, I don't know if y'all want to weigh in, but I would say because the existing parking space was there, we believe that parking space was associated to the home. I, I think Erin's right. I don't think they would have any required parking.
But if, but if they do on a daily basis, use it after this meeting as a place to park, then we'd end up being back the same place where we're today. We'd end up, y'all would probably give them citations then.
Yeah, that's, yes, that, I'm sorry. That's the problem is that even though the parking space where it is right now is fine, but as soon as they put a roof over it, it's now, we know it's a carport because it's paved, they can park there.
Yeah, it's being, you're being utilized, so it's gotta be, so this triggers that nine-by-27-foot to be there.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So they'd have to remove that and call it a, it's not just calling it a porch, it's calling it a porch and taking out the, the concrete underneath it.
Yeah, otherwise it comes to, yeah.
The carport itself isn't in the middle. It's at the end where the, the porch.
No, not here. This is, this is the part they're complaining about. This is, this is, this car is actually here.
Who, who drew up this picture?
Yeah, that's why I looked at that picture.
I'm sorry, Mr. Feis, did you have a question?
I'm confused.
It looks like the actual driveway is to the left where it says 27 feet. That's the actual drive that they're actually using as a carport. The other part is all porch, but that's not how it's being presented here.
Okay. I guess I-
So-
I believe our staff got it from our building permits, but maybe there's been a change that we weren't aware of, is what it sounds like possibly.
Is this, is this drawing truly reflect what you're doing or not?
No, the carport is not in the middle. It's supposed to be porch, porch, and then carport to-
Okay, so who, who submitted this to?
Um, I did. I'm sorry.
Did you get that, Gary?
The first one that, what we got submitted-
This drawing in, in acre. That drawing in acre.
Sounds like there's been a, a, a change where the carport, instead of being in the middle, it's gonna be to the, what would be the south of, the south end. So the bottom and the top two are porches. Which in reality, it really doesn't, I mean, other than just scooting the driveway down, if that's where the driveway needs to be.
Towards Mrs. Smith's house?
That's what it sounds like, yes.
But they're in violation if they cover it.
Because it's too close. They still have to set it back five feet. Is that correct?
There is a five-foot setback under the zoning ordinance on that side. The building code might allow a closer one, but the zoning-
Is that, is that picture that y'all took, is that not one of the vehicles that's parked in the spot that says carport? Right now?
I would say that's probably where the pickup is, based on that image.
Um, the, where the pickup is is where the carport is, yes.
The, the picture we saw that they took, there's a, there's a white SUV sitting there underneath, underneath that awning. Is that where it says carport? Is that vehicle parked where it says carport? So you're utilizing it as a carport?
Right, we are not anymore, since we've changed it all, since he's been building that on. They took that pic, I don't know when they took that picture. But I just ran inside to get something and that's why that's parked there. His truck is where the carport is actually gonna be. And the rest is just like, we have a table and chair set up where that says carport now. So we're not even using that area right now.
That's, so that's just a porch for you.
Right.
Sit under. Is there, is there concrete under there?
Yes.
Okay. My question's for staff. So there's been a permit issued for something here?
I, I think what happened, and we'd have to go back, and we're sorry that, that there, there seems to be a discrepancy. But the zoning board, the variance or the administrative adjustment application that we saw, and when I spoke to Mr. Beach, was that it was going to be the middle carport like you see there. So everything that we're, we're aware of is, which makes sense because that's where the parking is. The parking is in the middle. So therefore the variance would be to allow them not to, if you approved it, would be not to allow the driveway in front of that space. It wouldn't make sense to have it to the south because then there's, now there's two problems. They don't have the area that says porch is unpaved underneath and there's no driveway in front. So we, we understood all along it was gonna be the middle. So we'd have to go back and research when they split up that permit, how that, if that permit was, how that was issued differently. And that may, that's something that can be, I would think, adjusted. But the variance is what you're looking at today for the middle.
Where the city's gonna have that 10-foot, is that, is that a designator where it has to be? Or is it, or can, or can it be moved down to that area to the south?
Okay, so if we're talking, I guess, that may be for our attorney, but the, the variance that was submitted is for the middle today. So if they wanted to change that and want it to the south, it would open up all sorts of issues. Number one-
That's what you just said.
Yeah, so, so to do the south, we would have to come back, I would think, because then the variance would be not to pave underneath as well as not paving the driveway. Everything would change.
It sounds like we need to table this, ma'am. This is a no vote.
So Chairman, the permit has been issued, was approved and issued for the porches.
Okay.
And so the question in, in my mind, and Jeff, correct me if I'm stating this wrong. Today, we're looking at the paving from the structure to the right-of-way. Now, if they changed something since the permit was approved, say that they moved the parking for some reason, that might be looked at, at the CO to say, all right, where's your paved parking? Is that what we would do or is this? Because I'm, it sounds like we don't, I mean, obviously there's the option to table it, get some more information and bring it back to say, all right, here's, here's where we're at today. At the same time, I feel empathy for the applicant to say, hey, I've come forward, what can we do today? And that's not projecting any decisions on y'all. Y'all just didn't make a decision.
So, so the question might be, they've got porch, carport, porch. If they change that and make it porch, porch, carport, it's, it doesn't matter because they still have to do 27 and 10 for a driveway somewhere. Yeah, yeah, they still have to have a driveway, no matter where they put it.
They still have to have a driveway. And if they, say the configuration changed and took their paved parking away, we would have to evaluate, does it actually trigger paved parking, like Jeff said? Does it or does it not? I'm not sure we're 100% sure on that. And so then we could deal with that potentially as a second item. If y'all have made a decision today, let's, let's let the city deal with that with a second item. If it's not agreeable with the applicant and staff, well, let's bring that item to ZBA of do they need paved parking or not as a variance potential for that?
But Erin, in, in the pictures that she presented to us today, there's a photograph of a SUV parked and sitting underneath the area that says carport right now.
Okay.
So the permits that were granted, were they granted like this? Were a porch on either side?
Yeah, I'd have to add, we do have a representative from building permits here. Melissa can help me. I was trying to log in and find that information for you, but I think she beat me to it, so she might have a better answer than I would. So Melissa, do you mind describing what?
So the permit that was approved, the porch is where it says porch at the top and carport were approved to be a porch. The, where it says porch at the bottom was taken off and that wasn't into consideration. That was what we assume is where the carport was gonna go.
So the upper yellow and the blue were both labeled porch?
It wasn't labeled, I don't believe. I think it just shows it.
Just two, two squares there, okay.
Yeah, there's just two. So, but yeah, it's the two squares directly in front of the house are what's approved as a porch.
Porch is in front of the house.
Yes. So the paved parking spot, as you'd say, is under than what's now approved as a porch?
Even though there's a vehicle under it?
Yeah, I mean, people can change the use. I mean, it happens quite often if the only issue here is not having the required parking.
I'm confused with okay.
Well, I, I have a completely random different question. If we move the carport, carport south, she still needs to move part of the, of the building or just the awning part back, doesn't she? Does that limit how wide her driveway will be if she's got to move it down closer to her neighbor?
Well, what Jeff was saying is the zoning ordinance is still gonna require the five feet from the property line setback. But a parking space only has to be nine by 18, so her, I think it shows as 20 feet wide.
Okay, so she'll have enough, okay. I just didn't know how that was gonna work with it being so close to the neighbors.
So anytime anyone out in that area doesn't add on to get a permit, it will trigger driveways?
Only parking or something like that.
They add on a garage or something?
Possibly, yes. I mean, it, part of the review would be what's the connection to the paved parking? Is that a paved connection to the street or is it not? And that's what they reviewed in this case. So building permits does the structural review. They will send sometimes if they have questions over to planning, hey, this may look a little odd to them, planning, could you look at this and weigh in? That's what happened here where Jeff then kind of looked at it flagged like, ooh, it looks like you don't have a paved connection. I, I think he talked maybe with the applicant at that time, said, here's what we need to probably do to resolve this. And I think he also said, hey, let's, let's help you by getting the permit to keep going, moving forward if we relabel it, trying to, to work through that and trying to get to the ZBA for this decision of the driveway itself, of the paved connection.
So I guess we'll put it in a different context here. So if we decide to use impervious material of that 27 feet, in the future, the other areas, I forgot how many estimated were-
Fifty-five, fifty-six.
Fifty-five percent, yeah.
Be coming to hit a variance on impervious versus pervious.
There's a possibility, some of those properties are so small that they may not improve. I mean, they may not build out, that triggers an additional parking space or something like that. This one just happened to do that. If you, if you look at some of the images from the satellite, you see if it was a new house that was built out there, they built, you know, the full 20-foot-wide driveway all to the, all the way to the street. It just depends on scale of costs. You know, we're not building a new home here. We're building a porch and a carport. And now there's 27 feet of connection. The zoning ordinance says you gotta have it paved. We weren't comfortable, the director said, mm, looks like there's quite a few that are paved. If they, if that percentage was different, maybe Caliche is appropriate. As Jeff mentioned as part of his background, when it comes to, and tell me, Jeff, if I'm saying this wrong, if it's rural or recreational in nature, maybe that's appropriate as in a, um, a, not an asphalt or concrete connection. You know, you think about some of the R and E properties that we have around town and they're 300, 400 feet back, that's a lot of paving. Does it make more sense, and even stormwater-wise, to allow water to drain through and percolate?
So if an applicant came to you with this summer exact, summer project and they were requesting a permit at the very beginning, and you'd say, yes, okay, we'll approve this, but you're gonna need to put in a pervious material between the end of your, where your driveway is to the road and then the 10 feet additional. That's gonna be, for we'll approve this permit, you have to do this. Is that how that would be?
Yes, that, that's what they would, it ended up having to-
In other words, if you don't do this, then you don't get the permit.
Right, where they show here that kind of yellow strip and that word Caliche, had that said asphalt or concrete, they would have stamped it and said, all right, here's your site plan, here's your construction plans. And the intent is, all right, they do that, they'll call in their inspections and go from there.
And then, but they would require a pervious material like-
Correct.
Mr. Cortez saying either concrete or asphalt or something like that?
I do think there's an opportunity in the future for the city to discuss or consider what other materials are suitable for driveways. We just don't have that ability right now because our ordinance and our design manuals don't allow for it. But maybe there is there, maybe that's a discussion in the future through the development task force or something like that.
But to get them approved, the permit, you would have said, this is what you gotta do?
Yes, in, in this case, they, they took away the, the carport designation to allow them to move forward with the building permits where it didn't trigger it. And we're trying to solve the, the carport situation today because that's where their designated parking is, which means they have to have a paved connection under the zoning ordinance to the, to the roadway. Is that clear as?
Clear as mud.
As a West Texas dust storm?
I would say, off of what we have, those four criteria are not met, in my opinion. Therefore, we can't, I'm in the opinion that has to be paved or something.
Yeah.
That's where I'm, that's where I think, that's where I'm standing.
Willing, listen, any more questions for Ms. Beach? Thank you. All right, boards, here we go. Let's talk about it.
And I, I just want this on record too, to clarify for you all that I think what happened was the, when they came in with their permit and- And I, I just want this on record too, to clarify for you all, that I think what happened was the, when they came in with their permit initially, and again, they've been very good to work with, but, um, staff understood and their original plan had showed the, um, the one to the bottom. So where it says porch on the south end, that's what was originally submitted. And so when they, I believe the permit that Melissa was talking about was to issue was the two squares to the, to the north, thinking it was going to be the south. Later, that was revised, uh, after speaking to Mr. Beach, and this plan was submitted to show the middle, which is what we believed all along because that's where the parking area is under the carport in the middle. So we've all, we've understood from that point on that it was really for the middle driveway, that this is what y'all are looking at. So that may be another question if it's, you know, can we make that revision now and look at the south, um, you know, at the driveway to the south now, which is where it's really going to be? Cause if that's the case, we know it doesn't meet the side setbacks, so there's, there's going to be certain issues that they're going to have to fix. Or do we, I don't know, revise the permit somehow and make an adjustment and focus on the middle? Which is, again, what, what, what staff understood, it was going to be the middle, um, area where they were going to park. So, sorry for the confusion.
Y'all have to pour more concrete if we go to the south, right?
That's right, they only have to do the, in the middle, the twenty-seven feet. And, and the ten feet to the road anyway. But if they, if you approve the one to the south, they have to do nine by eighteen underneath that porch.
Right.
Plus twenty-seven, plus ten to the road.
All right. Let's start having our comments.
If it is denied, uh, this is administrative one, they can come back and, and, uh, look at the southern portion and apply for a whole new permitting for a carport pouring and, and just a whole.
New design.
New design. And by, and maintain the porches, the covered, the, the slab that's underneath there, that's all okay. Is that correct?
Mm-mm, I don't think so.
Looking at the, the permit that was issued, there's nothing there that would indicate that what we have issued so far, that they have applied for a carport.
The best I, the best I can tell based on their site plan drawing. So I think Bobby, what you're saying is, can they, if it was denied today, can they move forward with the, the two top pieces without dealing with the driveway? And then come to the bottom at some point, apply for a permit, deal with setbacks and driveway at that time? I think the short answer's yes. Now, the question is, are they out of compliance or something of having any parking or any paved connection? That, that's the part that I'm trying to struggle with in my head is, is that a, is that a problem? And I kind of lean on my, my experts over here to help me with that. And, and I'm not sure that we know the answer, so say, hey, we don't know that answer, we need to get some more data. If this property's parking goes away. With what they have proposed, what they've been permitted, would they have to have parking and thus a paved connection to the road? Or would they be exempt from parking until they added a carport?
They would be exempt. Yes, for sure.
So there's, there's the answer.
So if you call it porch and not carport. As long as you don't park under it.
Now, the applicant runs the risk if they choose to park under there. Now, if a hailstorm comes, I think park under there and protect your property.
Yeah.
We'll deal with the outcomes as, as we need to.
But part of that structure already exists.
Part of that structure does exist, and so that has to be dealt with probably through enforcement through a building permit since it's a structure.
The intent is to have parking there.
Yes. I look towards Brandon, if he shakes his head one way or the other, if he just stays stoic, I'm okay.
So, since I've got the permit on the porches. Do they really need an answer from us today?
Yeah, I mean, I'm struggling too to, as to whether y'all can make a decision on something they haven't really technically applied for yet, if I'm understanding it right.
To me right now, if it, if it walks like a duck, it talks like a duck, it's a duck. And what they're, what you presented us today is a carport.
So the permit was originally applied for, for all of it. The original permit was modified to just be the porch, so it took away the application for the carport.
And it's the, it's the top and the middle, is that right, Melissa?
That's the approved permit, the ones right in front of the house are the approved permit for a porch.
I don't think we're doing anything.
I think we just leave it. She already has the permits for her porches. So do we, do we need to officially make a motion to say that we're going to table this due to, uh, lack of information? And hopefully it'll come back someday with a actual carport application?
I, I think that's the best decision that we could make today is, is to recommend tabling until more information comes forward.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
There you go.
Let's go.
Any comments? Will some vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Seven, zero.
Ms. Beach, do you understand what we've decided?
Let's see, where am I at now?
I believe so. So next, I'm sorry. So since the, talk to you already has a permit, I mean, y'all really couldn't make a decision because we didn't do anything. So as long as we don't do anything with the other carport area, then that's fine.
You're fine right now?
Okay, yes.
You would still need a permit for that bottom piece?
Right.
Yes, okay.
That's going to be a whole different permit.
And if we just take, like, I know that we already have like part of it up, but if we just take that down and, then nothing happens, no?
I think that's probably true. Uh, I'm going to get with the building official afterwards and ask her some of those questions. So I think Jeff probably has your contact information, so as soon as we get that answer of what needs to be resolved at that end, we're going to give you a call and, and talk with you guys. Or you have you and your husband come up and visit with you, whatever works for you guys.
Okay, awesome. Y'all still need that paper?
No, that's fine. That's fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number five, public comment? Really, I feel like we're city council now. This is new, isn't it?
Yeah, it, it's new. Um, we're doing this on a lot of our boards because if there's an item that wasn't on the agenda, but it was intended, like, if y'all wanted an update on something. This allows us some flexibility to talk about things that aren't on the agenda so long as it's in a public comment format. And we wouldn't be in violation of the Owen Meetings Act to do, do that. So, city council has it, anyone can come up, talk about anything that, um, may, you know, involve this board, so.
And we can make comments too as a board on public comments?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, do I need to read it?
God damn.
Thank you. Any public comment? Rock and roll. Number six, division report?
Currently not a whole lot to report, other than it's summertime. Um, probably next time that we actually have a meeting, I'm going to show some stats. I'd like to show some stats during the public, uh, section or maybe do an agenda item that's a non-action item. Because one thing we look at is how many ZBA cases are coming forward. And when not very many are coming forward, either the zoning ordinance means that it's got it fairly right, or maybe there's something we need to look at at some point. And so we're going to do some of that. Just kind of a staff update, um, we did hire a new planner over this last month. Uh, I lost my development services tech, Ray Lineberry, she has now become a planner. And she started with us and she'll, you'll probably see her, if we have a meeting in July, you'll probably see her July. Um, our planning manager is out on medical leave right now. Um, so if y'all have questions about planning, feel free to contact one of the, the guys over here, Jeff or Kyle, or reach out to me and I'll be happy to try to get you an answer. Of course, you can always reach out to John James, um, and he's, he actually knows most of the answers better than I do. And so if you really want the right answer, go with him. If you want an answer, I can give you one.
Who led?
Uh, Rafael Alvarado.
Thank you, Aaron. Next meeting, maybe, July eleventh? Anything coming up? Don't know yet?
Jeff, I think you had maybe one case pending, but I think that might be the only case. They have not quite applied yet, but I know he'd been working with an applicant, so we haven't seen it. Friday is the deadline, so if we get something, we'll probably let you know because that's close to the fourth of July. Not that everybody takes two weeks off, but you never know. Yeah, Stephanie's like, who is that?
All right, need a motion to a jury? Here's a motion.
I was going to say.
All in favor, say aye.